Okay, I think we got six thirty, so I think we'll get started. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Park Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Monday, June third, two thousand and twenty-four. Call the meeting to order. And we've got a few items on the agenda, but our first here is for approval of the agenda, so I'll be looking for motion to approve the agenda. As presented. We got a motion and support. All in favor?
I agree.
All right, motion passes, moving on. Item or number three here for approval of the minutes from our May sixth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Everybody's had an opportunity to take a, take a look at our record-setting meeting last time. With six, six items. Yeah, six items last time.
Mr. Chair, I can motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Are we got a motion of support? All favor? Motion carries, so we'll move on to the, our public hearing number one first. Mika, did you want to introduce?
Sure, to just to introduce to the members of the zoning board of appeals, we have a new recording secretary, this is his first night, Jim Hayden is going to be joining us. So we're thrilled to have Jim here, he's got a lot of experience, glad to have him. Reminder, as you are making your motions, if you could please speak into the microphone, and we might want to take a minute just to make sure that he hears who makes the motion and does the second while he learns things.
Welcome, Jim, thanks. Okay, uh, we've got, like I said, we have three items on our agenda, and we've got a determination after that. But our first hearing, public hearing number one is up, Mika, would you want to introduce that for us?
Hit my page here a second. Okay, this is for I'm out of order. Okay, this is for an accessory structure, and there are two items for consideration here, the accessory structure is a little bit larger than is permitted by the zoning ordinance. As you know, sometimes that's something that can be reviewed by staff, but since there is an additional question of the setback, that's why it's being heard by the zoning board of appeals. With regard to the setback, there are two questions, one is the, is just the setback in general. It's a little tighter than is permitted, and then additionally, there's another provision within the zoning code, which is based on a provision of the building code, which requires structures to be ten feet apart or more. The reasoning behind that is you need to add additional fireproofing and building code stuff in order to do that.
Look in here tonight, I can speak for this, if you want to add some additional. That'd be great.
You're, yep, you're welcome to explain your project and any other context that you'd like to add.
And if there's a sign-in sheet there with your name and address, thanks.
Okay, so is there a specific question?
No, no questions, just if you want, if you want to speak to this a little bit, you can.
We've got introduced already.
You can introduce yourself too.
Chuck Mac. The, the location for the setback, the reason for that is it is, the access to it is going to be around the end of the house. And the backyard is a walkout. And if it were you to come too far around the back of the house, there'd be a bunch of excavating and whatnot that would need to be made to keep this thing from sliding into the backyard. As far as the setback from the, from the neighboring structure, it is a small shed that is just ten feet wide. And I, I don't as far as fire protection and whatnot, I'm not familiar with that part of the code. But it's just a storage shed this long.
So, okay.
Maybe some questions, if you're, explanation, you're welcome to say it now, if not.
As far as size-wise, it would just be nice to have a, a building that's standard sizes, less waste, and then just like, I do a lot of things, so a building where you could put a car in it and like, it wasn't a work.
All right.
Thank you.
Great.
We have any questions for the applicant?
I guess I have one, just Mika, I mean, if, if gonna be placed within that distance of less than ten feet. I mean, by, by code, right, you, you do have to have, it has to be a fire barrier, right?
Yeah, so
Or firewall.
Yeah, and I don't know how that works. So if, if you're building a new structure and you're placing it closer, I know that you have to put a lot of fireproofing on that exterior wall. I don't think you have to do anything with the existing structure that's already there on the neighboring property. But, I mean, I'm pretty confident of that, but I, I'm not exactly sure how those two things interact, because that's, that's really what the building inspector takes a look at.
Right, yeah, it'd be hard, hard to force the neighbor to.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I remember, I'm remembering when we built our garage, we did something similar to that, we fireproofed our wall, but the existing structure next door didn't do that, so.
Okay.
But if they seek to modify their structure or enlarge it or build something new in the future.
They would be required to add those layers, yes. It did not appreciate, yeah, his is also three feet.
It's good to know.
Is it the trees that prevent you from pushing it back further, so you're not directly next to the existing shed?
That's what, that's what's pushing it. You can't move it more. You can't gain the ten, you know, the five additional feet.
Pushing it east is the slope going down, the grade going down into the backyard.
Isn't the east edge what we're talking about though, right? Five feet is the setback right now that you're, so that's, that's east, right, so if you were, you can't push it west.
Yeah, if, let's say, west, it would be down.
Oh, it'd be down. I, I see what you're saying here, I see the topo here now. How that's working, okay.
The only, I mean, I have a little concern about this is this is some of the, we, we've argued that in that, when people build or construct things on their property out and they have to manage their topography of the property, and so you know, the variance, you need fill, or that's the knowledge, we everything, you hear that often, and I think that's the strongest argument. Because then often, trees have to be removed, things are built. When they want to, it's, I think, it's just that it's hard with construction, so.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it's additional expense, I know, but yeah.
Did, did you consider a building that was maybe a different configuration, that could be more perpendicular to the lot line? So that you could perhaps get away from the neighbor's shed a little more, still utilize the east side of your house to access this accessory structure. But it would be less of an impact on a reduced setback and presumably less impact on the neighbor's shed. If you were to orient it differently.
It would require a major rework of the bed, I mean, we would need to bring the rebuild this evening. There's already, there was already an erosion issue, and we've taken care of that with a bit of a retaining wall and and torn the runoff from the house, so that it didn't occur anymore.
Yeah, it looks like it's what, five feet to drop there from east to west or something in the backyard.
Yeah, well, are you already, you're gonna have to do something, right? You get a little bit of grading.
I
You have to do this.
There, there will be some fills in the acid runoff.
Okay.
There, there is some topsoil that was removed from that area
Okay.
to get the rest of the yard in shape.
Or so like other positions on the
On your property, there's
There's no other way to have that towards the north even further, to avoid all of this, I mean, you guys, trees that probably at that point too, but
There would be three that wouldn't even be got at that.
Yeah.
It just looks less severe to the
What do we have any, do we have any other questions for the, at this point?
Well, if they can see, we may have some other questions here, a second. I'm sure, but it's just
For a situation for How I'm seeing it a little bit.
He signed a piece of paper.
Problem is though
The future.
You know, may have that, they have a different opinion, I guess, right? That's what we're just looking out for. That aspect, thank you. Yeah, have you thought about a lesser like fifteen foot? By twenty-eight foot? I mean, is that a consideration? It's
The difficulty is that we can't approve a variance, even if we all agree that that building would have great utility on the property and, and increases your property value and would, would look beautiful, we are required to follow the the factors in granting a variance, which is why we're struggling with some of these items. I don't doubt that it would, that it would be an improvement to the property and that sounds like it would get a lot of use, so. I too have some concern about the the extent of the setback reduction, not only that, given that there is an existing structure, but just given the length of the, I, I think the neighbor, I understand that the neighbor is not opposing this, but we do have to be cautious about how something like, you know, how this decision could affect future applications.
We've got in regards to setback, we've got the standards. Throw that first, right? On this, we've got a, another
For the side of it, so we're, we've got two.
Things here, okay, if one is complete, if we can get there. And as you know, we've got, you know, like
On the forest. Thirty-eight seventy. Ask for a few things here though.
For the strict compliance.
Property, you've got the property. Um, the topography. But maybe there's a certain compromise with elevation that set this thing down, so you're you're, you're cutting in a little bit, filling a little bit
lower than building to help make that compromise work, so it's not so costly.
But yourself. Okay.
Yeah, where you were about to put it, it's just making, making it harder to sell here, right, so with a great challenge.
I think that's a challenge, we can't, it's hard for us to
kind of get past here.
Is there an option of tabling this until he can, the applicant can get more information back to the board?
Certainly, probably could.
But that's, that's something the applicant would like to do, is certainly table, but if you're willing to consider something different like that.
Um, so if, if you decide to go that direction, I think it would probably be helpful to the applicant to give some kind of specific direction on what you're looking for with that, and then also to remember that if, if there is I wouldn't expect that there would be a change that would require um, a greater variance, it's what's being asked for, but there would be that risk of, of doing that and then needing to have it be re-noticed, but that's something that we could do.
So I think the risk here is if we move forward, I don't, I don't know, just hearing from what I'm hearing, I don't know if we're gonna get passed or get you an approval for the variance from the first part of this, so um, we can move forward and see if you're willing to, it's bad, I guess with this, we're gonna always doesn't reapply or something, but I think you're up, we're up against a setback issue first. Until we get to the side.
Another issue for us.
So if if the setback was increased, the additional two feet to be ten feet away from the neighbor's building, would that satisfy the board?
That meets the requirement, right? Ten For the building setback.
Yes, or the two, and I don't remember off the top of my head, I'm gonna have to go through this, yeah, so there's the ten feet, and then there's the minimum setback, which I assume was more than that, because I think we did, we did two, two things there.
I think that is a concern among the board, the proximity to the neighboring shed, and the impact that that may have on that property in the future, and so, just speaking for myself, that that would, in my opinion, change how I'm viewing the application, if knowing that that ten-foot separation existed.
Between the existing building and some versus the true ten-foot setback?
Correct.
So that would, so that would be instead of a five-foot request, a seven-foot request.
No, because it's
The neighbor, the neighbor stood us three feet from the lot line, so it would be a seven-foot setback. That would be a request, so.
Yeah, so rather than the five-foot setback, that's seven-foot setback, right, that's what, that would be, get to the ten feet.
Just be a lesser relaxation that you're seeking.
I, I think that could be worked around. I go much further than that, I'm gonna have to cut down a hundred and fifty-year-old tree.
Could go any further into the yard, your yard, to go west?
So probably have to go a little bit to, to still accommodate, at least, at least the access from the driver.
So if he's seeking the same size building, but now talking about shifting it over two feet to the west, seems like we could still address that tonight, because it doesn't I don't think that would require him to come back at a later date.
No, it wouldn't, I would agree.
You can agree on that.
Less relaxing.
Yep.
Me, okay.
I think we're
So I guess, yeah, we're, we need to look at it now, but yeah, is this being a seven-foot setback or is it a five-foot setback? So having that lesser relaxation, what impact does that have on the decision?
For discussion.
Do you know anything, leave it for sure, I think it's, but the neighbor's property survey, that's third location, or is it just kind of a
There's, there, there is a current survey.
Of the neighbors?
I don't know about neighbors, okay. I, I know exactly the property line is
I guess what we could say is to make sure we're doing due diligence is to say that we want it ten feet away.
Right, however, it's surveyed.
Seven feet or ten feet from the neighbor's structure was a little greater.
Right.
Future-wise, we're still looking at it, we're still, there's still hardship for the neighbor, in my opinion, right, because we're still so, someday, right, you're not allowing that that your work be impactful to the neighbor in the future. But
But it will be, so long as the neighbor's three feet off their property line, there will still be ten feet of separation.
I guess they would not be able to build.
They wouldn't be able to build closer than that if they, if it was a permitted activity, regardless, they would still have to meet, the neighbor would have to meet the five-foot minimum.
Yeah.
If they rebuilt.
Oh, hearing all of that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to make a motion that we approve the request for a side yard setback variance with the setback being seven feet from the eastern boundary or ten feet from the neighbor's existing shed, whichever is greater. Um, under the standards in section thirty-eight seventy, the first factor is that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area, yard setbacks, frontage, height, bulk or density or other regulation would render conformity with those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. Um, in this case, there is a change in grade, um, the topography of the property makes strict compliance with the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome, that combined with the impacts of erosion on this property. In my opinion, I believe that this factor has been satisfied. Number two, that granting the requesting variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. Again, this requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant in that it would allow the applicant to utilize on the property for an accessory building, without requiring the removal of large existing trees on the property. And the applicant has agreed to a lesser relaxation from the initial five-foot request to provide some additional buffer between this new structure and the existing structure on the neighbor's property. Uh, for that reason, I believe that this factor has been met. Third, that the plight of the property owner is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. There is no evidence before the board that this is a general condition of this zoning district, and therefore I believe that this factor has been met. Finally, that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. It appears that there's no evidence the applicant has taken any action and has created the need for this variance. Um, again, we've heard about topography and the impacts of erosion on this property, and for this reason, I believe that this factor has been met.
So we got a support, approved, we got support. All right, I guess we'll take a roll. If you could take a vote. And asking me last.
Jane?
Support.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Part one.
Now we've got four
This
to review for the actual building size of the accessory building. It's being discussed now, so we've got, we've got a building
Here, five hundred
or four hundred and ninety-four.
So we've got five standards to review here. Number thirty-eight, four ninety-one. Looks like we're just over our two wow, right, and I always standardly look at those things. So point seven percent over.
Mr. Chair, may I ask the applicant a question?
Absolutely. Can you, sorry, go ahead.
Are there, are there trees, would there be trees or other screening between the building and the east property line in the seven feet?
Yes, there's a, there's a fence there that has vines growing all over it, as well as some other trees.
And that's going to remain?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I guess before we move on any further, I'm realizing, I don't think I had a public hearing for anyone, so is there anyone in the room that wants to speak for or against us? Item, no, all right, I'm gonna close the hearing, sorry, sorry, I didn't do that earlier. All right. Back to our stand. Back to our stand. That is hardship.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, is it okay? I'm just a little concerned about the size of this, you know? Why is it making that noise? I apologize, I'm glad, sorry. But I am, I'm a little concerned about the size of the building. And, and with the trees and things, maybe the size could be adjusted or moved or something that you wouldn't have to lose a tree.
Right.
Um, if it were smaller.
So we're over by fifty, just over fifty square feet from the allowable, it looks like, so. Looks like you took two feet off of the building's depth instead of being twenty eight feet long, twenty six feet long would get you. Almost right there. Is there? Any willingness to have a extra relaxation for the size here? So that we're compliant?
Mr. Chair, the, the maximum is uh, four hundred nine point four square feet and this is five sixty, so it's a little bit more than, it's more like a hundred and sixty.
Oh, it's a hundred, sorry, sorry, sorry. I think, forgot to carry one. My bad. It's a hundred and fifty square feet different. It's a little different. Yeah, we're talking about five, just over five feet. But still, yeah, you're in the realm of a twenty three foot. That's what we're up against, right? We're.
I'm just terrible at this. I'm a little concerned about the size of the building and why, I think. I'm concerned that it should be in compliance. I guess I really believe that. I, I don't know why. An accessory building couldn't be the size that the township wishes and that you could enjoy that. Size of building for your car and your tools and things. I, I just, um, I'm a little bit of. Concerned about the accessory building size.
Mika, may I ask?
You may.
May I ask if, if this application had not involved a setback, a request for a setback variance? Is this the type of structure that would have been administratively approved for this property?
It is, and uh, the process for that would have been to, similar to this, to send out notices to the neighbors, to hear if anyone has any objections. Uh, and then to go through the process. Knowing I didn't look at it in depth for that, knowing that I was sending it here, I would say that this is probably one that I would have looked at favorably just. Based on approvals that the, that the zoning board of appeals has made in the past.
I agree that the, the footprint is large, however, it seems, in my opinion, to be consistent with. What the township ordinance contemplates um, and. I think given the height was being, you know, proportionate to the principal structure that, that was important. In my opinion, I think that lessens the visual impact of it. Mr. Chair, make a move, a motion.
We are.
Um, I would make a motion to approve. The request for the increased size of the accessory structure um, under section thirty eight dash four ninety one. First of the area of the accessory building in relation to the size of the lot on which it is to be placed. That's the first factor we're supposed to consider. Um, it appears that um, this application is requesting. A structure that is two point seven percent of the parcel size, which is just over the two percent maximum allowed by right. Um, the proposed building is slightly larger than the minimum size for a two stall garage. Um, but as staff indicated, this is in keeping with the type of structure that would have been administratively. Proved had it not been for the setback issue in this case. Um, the second factor we look at is the area of the accessory building in relation to the principal building on the lot on which the accessory building is to be placed. Um, here, the, in relation to the principal building. Uh, the record indicates that the accessory building would be about twenty seven percent the size of the principal structure. And as I previously indicated, close to the same height as the one story residence, um, indicating that it is in proportion to the. Principal building. Third, we look at the location of the accessory building in relation to other buildings on adjoining lots and in relation to the principal building on the lot, again. Um, the applicant is indicating um, thirty feet behind the principal building. Which appears to be reasonable, we've already addressed the relation to the um. Buildings on adjoining lots and discussing the setback variance. Um, for these reasons, I believe that the standard has been met. We look at um, fourth, whether or not the accessory building will affect light and air circulation of any adjoining property. Um. The applicant has agreed to a larger side yard setback between the structure and the neighbor's uh, shed. That will increase the air circulation between the structures. Also noted by the applicant and as indicated in our packet, the neighbor had no objection to the request. Um, for this reason, I believe this factor has been met. Finally, whether the accessory building will adversely affect the adjoining property or the view from the adjoining property. Uh, it appears that the structure will be screened by way of a fence and some vegetative. Screening of some kind um, being the vines on the fence. And it does not appear then that there would be an adverse effect on the adjoining property, again, as indicated by the neighbor's um, agreement with this. Um, for those reasons, I believe that.
Thank you. So looking for. Support.
I'll support.
Support. Alright, we've got support, we'll take a roll call. Jim, if you can do that. You, you can, I would just do the same if you want, that'd be great.
First, no.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Alright, we passed four to one, so you've got your approval and. Big next step for, is to hear from Mika, right?
Yep.
So. Okay, moving on, are we got our next hearing number two? Mika, if you can present that.
Make sure I have the right hearing of this hearing number two, it's not out of order. Okay. Uh, this is a request by Susan and Tom English, this is a request for a rear yard setback. Uh, this is in the Chippewa neighborhood, uh, it's on a corner lot. Uh, so it's similar to applications that you've received before with the question of the rear yard and the side yard. Um, and so they're looking for a rear yard setback of twenty eight feet where fifty feet are required. Uh, they're also worth noting in the location on the neighborhood, in, in the neighborhood. Where rear yard averaging is not available to them because uh, there aren't, there aren't other houses on the block, so. Um, if you are on the other side of the, of the street, you would have access to that rear yard averaging in a way that you don't have in their location.
Okay, yeah, is there someone in the audience tonight wants to speak? A little bit more to this item. If you could please introduce yourself, sign in, looks like you're doing that, thank you.
I'm, I'm Susan English, um, my husband Tom is all co here. Now I can see. Um, not to be confused with Tim and Liz English, who were just here, that's um, our brother, brother-in-law. So our cottage was originally my mom, my mom and my aunt. Grandpa was across the street with grandma, uncle and aunt were down the street and his parents bought a cottage. A million years ago, back when we were in high school. So Tim and Liz have the one cottage from the Englishes. And we will have the cottage from the Koch family from um, my parents, so um. So it's an older cottage, um, they have, my parents had put some outbuilding, one, one outbuilding. Um, on the property between us and our closest neighbors. And the addition that we want to do is, we're trying to keep it modest, we wanna keep it one story. We want to save as many trees as we can, leave a lot of oak trees on our lot. Um, and so we are going towards the neighbor. But there's really a garage and a shed between us and the neighbor, so it goes that direction. Um. And it's non-compliant to start with. Because even, even the original house would have been non-compliant to start with. Um, so Mika was great helping us, you know, fill out the paperwork and um, you know, you know, work through some of this, but. Um, that's a skinny, we're just adding um, two bedrooms and a bath to try to keep the cottage usable as a cottage. Um, as opposed to so many of the places in the neighborhood that are tear downs, rebuilds with these, you know, giant homes. Um, we'd really like to keep it as a cottage for another generation or two.
Great, thank you. I guess, do we have any questions for the applicant, why she's here? Guess Susan, you can take a seat quick and if something happens to come up, we'll ask you. Thank you. Okay.
Sorry. Hearing impairment, and I was having a hard time hearing you, so if you don't mind speaking up a little bit. So that I can hear if you do have questions, that would be appreciated.
Sure thing, no problem. Thank you. At this moment, we'll open it up for a public hearing, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak for, against. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open board discussion. So we've got, we've got two items again for this one, right? Setback in for the addition.
Yep.
Being within the setback.
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, it appears that we've received four pieces of correspondence tonight.
Two for, two against, is what I tallied. We can make note, note of that in the minutes.
Yeah, I can hand them to you. Give me just a second to give them.
Mika, can you clarify?
Yes.
In this first, well, I guess, where, in the, what the rear yard is, where is the rear yard? Is it to the east or is it to the north?
I think it's to the north, let me fill up the map a second. Yeah, the, you've got this street on the west and then a street on the south and a street on the east off further, so the rear yard is, is the one to the north.
One to the north, there's the rear.
Yep.
So the side would be to the east?
Correct. And then the side yard with the front yard setback required is to the west.
Okay.
I have a question requiring some clarification as well.
Yes.
Um, it's actually jumping ahead a little bit because it's on the second part of the request, but under the first standard. Um, the staff comments say that the proposed addition would add not more than thirty eight percent to the length of the main wall. And when I look at the, when I look at the plans, it appears that the addition is the entire length of. The sides, was the thirty eight in proportion to the front wall?
That's what I was measuring in proportion to, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. I thought that might be the case, but.
Sorry to make a note.
It talks about the main wall, which has been altered. And I suppose it is altered on the front and then also.
It kind of is altered on both, I was looking at it as the, the area that's being expanded, so that was how I was.
That makes sense, okay, thank you. And if this was not a corner lot, the side yard setback would be.
Ten feet.
Alright, I'm confused. Side yard again? Because the side yard setback of thirty four where forty is required, right?
Yes, so that's the, that's the side yard where the front yard setback is required, which is think is beach street. So it's like the one.
Beach street, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's like the one from last, last month.
Hmm.
Was that corner lot where you've got the side yard and then you've got the side yard that's fronting a street and so it's got the front yard setback required.
Cause I see, I don't see us uh. The houses are growing. Towards beach, correct?
No, it's, that's, that's the expansion of the existing non-conforming setbacks, so I think that the setback along beach right now, the existing house. I think if I'm remembering correctly, it's at thirty four feet uh, from the edge of the right of way.
Where forty is required, right?
Exactly, yeah. Do I have it backwards? Uh, I think that was to the improved surface of the street as opposed to, to the edge of the right of way.
Yeah, on the drawings that we should have right now, so it's forty five foot nine.
Yeah, so that was, and I think, I, I had intended to put that in the memo, whether I did or not, I don't know. Um, but I think that that was, that was a measurement that was made uh, to the improved surface of the street, which is something that a lot of people. Think, but it's, it's that to the right of way, which is invisible and you can only see on the map.
Okay. They're building to the north, right?
So it looks like one of the neighbors that was opposing this is across the street on Lake. I'm reading right, to the south, eighteen eighty six Lake Street. Evan House.
It looks like that's at the uh, eastern edge of Lake Street next to the.
Little cul-de-sac in the park, the road and park there.
Yeah.
And the next door neighbor wrote on four twenty Chippewa too, right?
Yeah, four twenty Chippewa also had.
Concern.
Concern. Hey. So I guess for order of review or motions, I. Staff recommendations have us looking at the rear yard first?
It seemed like that was the more significant one, others kind of want to move.
Cause it's pretty typical for the, long as the plane is continuous, right, for the addition that's. Is that also, was that already an ordinance that passed or over the allowable, is that why we're talking about it, it's over the allowable percentage of increase along that plane?
No, you have to review them every time it goes along the plane. So. Increase, increase of a non-conformity or an expansion of a non-conformity. Expansion of a existing non-conforming setback, I think is. How the language is.
Okay. Okay. Yes, we've got. Four standards? And four standards. For the rear yard?
Mr. Chair, let me make a motion. That we approve the non-use dimensional variance for the rear yard. Specifically to grant a rear yard setback of twenty-eight feet where fifty feet is required. And the standards in section thirty-eight dash seven leaving as follows, one. That strict compliance with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area yard setbacks, frontage height, bulk or density or other regulation. Would render conformative those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. In this case, strict compliance would be rendered unnecessarily burdensome, given the location of this home. In a neighborhood where it is common to have non-conforming setbacks. And where the location of this property prevents it from taking advantage of rear yard averaging provisions. Staff notes in the staff report that the, on the adjacent block to the west, the average rear yard is approximately twenty-five feet. So even lesser than what the applicant is seeking here. For these reasons, I believe this factor may be met. Second, that granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. Granting this variance would allow the property owner to build within a footprint that is common in the neighborhood. I agree with the staff's comments that the owners in this instance are unable to take advantage of the averaging provision in the ordinance. That is intended to accommodate variations in neighborhoods such as this, which creates an injustice to them. As such, the standard is not. Third, that the plight of the property owner is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. This is a corner lot that is not a general condition of the zoning district. It is a, it is a largely non-conforming neighborhood, however, this is a very small block. And unlike other areas in this zoning district in general, this property is not able to take advantage of the averaging provisions. Therefore, that standard is not, finally, that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. The practical difficulties in this matter are the result of the size and location of this parcel. And not the result of any actions on the property. For that reason, I believe that factor can be met.
Thank you. So we got, so we got motion to approve. We have support. I guess the next step here, we'll take a, take a roll call, Jim, if you could do that?
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright. Next, we have the enlargement along the existing setback on beach to talk about, so. There's discussion internally here, we need to talk more about it, but any questions? On that? We.
Two.
Excuse me, we're, we're still, we're still talking about your case.
We've got one more for you.
We've got, we've got the next setback to talk about, that was, that was just for the rear yard?
Yep.
Sorry. I should have been more clear. Didn't want you to leave. Yeah, so we're talking about along beach. The non-conforming issue that was presented, allowing that to continue. Along beach essentially.
There we go. That's the one where the neighbor.
Has there been a guideline for us to follow of any sort, Mika, before about the ratio of? Tolerance, I guess, that we might have for?
There.
There's, there's nothing written, is there?
No, not in this section, there's nothing written here.
Double checking. We've got just, just three standards here to look at, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Proportion effect joining properties. Addition does.
The last factor is kind of a non-issue because it's more than ten feet from the neighbor, from the lot line. So we really have two factors to look at. I think when we're looking at proportion, although the ordinance doesn't give us specific criteria, I think it. In this, in this application, I would say it's relevant that they're maintaining a single story. That the addition maintains the single story characteristics of the property. It's also relevant, in my opinion, that there are existing trees, that there are existing accessory buildings between. This primary structure and the neighbor's primary structure. And just given how this existing home is situated on the property, there appears to be a lot of open space, and so. Thirty-eight percent. Maybe one thing on one property or something else in this.
So relative, yeah.
Right. So it doesn't appear to me based on the application to be overwhelming or have significant impact on the surrounding properties.
Well, the neighbor was not happy. Well, I mean, the neighbor on Chippewa, where they're, they're adding this addition very strongly against it.
Yes, Chippewa is the angled. Road, is that correct?
Yes.
This, this right here.
It's the neighbor.
If they call the sack at the end?
Yeah, so it's the neighbor up here.
Right here.
And I think anytime someone is proposing to build closer to you, you, you get nervous maybe. I don't know if they've seen the plans, I don't know if they're familiar with the ordinance, so it's hard to know exactly what their concerns are.
Did you talk to your neighbor?
I tried, I sent her the email.
I mean, just with the information presented, the scale of this thing looks, you know, presentable, looks not overwhelming to me, I mean, it keeps the. Roofline even similar to where it is, it's just getting closer. It's.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's respectful, in my opinion.
Yes, well.
It certainly doesn't appear to be out of character for the neighbor.
Yeah, sandwich.
Yeah. It is. Correct, we, yeah, that was the first portion that we just voted on that was approved.
But the ordinance requires us to look at the proportion of what you're adding to the existing front of the home. And then also to consider the impact on adjoining properties, so there's a little overlap there, but the ordinance requires us to discuss that. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the enlargement within the existing setback. The applicant's request number two, I guess, of this matter. The standards are under section thirty-eight dash four eighty-three E two. First factor being the proportion of the main wall, we're required to consider the proportion of the main wall which has been altered by the addition. Staff comments indicate that the proposed addition would add not more than thirty-eight percent to the length of the main wall. In looking at the plans presented by the applicant, it appears that that thirty-eight percent. Maintains the roofline is consistent with the single-story nature of the structure. Does not appear to be overwhelming and seems to be in proportion with the overall structure, and therefore. Believe that factor can be met. Second, the overall effect of the proposed addition on the adjoining properties and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. In looking at that factor, we have discussed the overall effect of this addition on adjoining properties. And the character of the surrounding neighborhood when looking at and granting the request for the reduced setback. This proposed addition would be consistent with other properties in the surrounding neighborhood. It appears that it would have a relatively minor impact on the character of the neighborhood and the adjoining property, given its size. Configuration and the existence of screening both by way of trees, open space. And accessory structures between this addition and the neighbor's property. Finally, the third factor is that the addition shall not be less than five feet from the side and rear lot lines. And shall not be less than ten feet from the front lot line, that factor does not apply because this is. This proposed addition is over ten feet from the side. With, from the side with the front yard required, so that does not apply, for that reason, I believe the factor is not met.
Thanks for us look. Have support, I'll support that. Okay, Jim, you want to take a roll call for us?
I need to be first again, next time I'll be second.
Yes.
I understand.
Yes.
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 Yes, for me. Alright, you, you passed the second part of that as well. Appreciate your ever stood. That you've approached, you guys have taken here too, to maintain that cottage feel too, so. Okay. We've got public hearing number three. Mika, if you can present that for us?
Yes, this is one is at twenty-seven Straight Avenue, it's in the Idlewood neighborhood. And they are seeking a variance for the rear yard setback, they are seeking a variance to have a forty-foot rear yard setback where fifty feet is required by the ordinance. Similar to the last one, there weren't, there are enough properties within the block to do a comparison for rear yard averaging. The provision didn't apply because they're one of the smallest lots on the block, so rear yard averaging wasn't available to them because their lot size is different.
Okay. Thank you. So we've got the applicant here.
You can introduce yourself. My name is Jim DeRice, I have signed in. Mika handed us a letter. From one of the neighbors, I have another letter from a different neighbor that they said they emailed us to the township, did you get that one?
I don't recall, it's possibly.
Can I read it?
You are more welcome to read it.
Yes.
So this neighbor is directly to the south of us. It says, it stated April nineteen, we received notification that Jim and I with the recent request of the setback concerning twenty-seven Straight Avenue. Our address is thirty-seven Straight Avenue, which immediately borders to the south, the property in question, we are the closest neighbors. With the exception of the property on the north side. The setback request will not affect any neighbors negatively, we have no objections to this application, in fact, improvements. To this property are certainly a benefit to our community, we curse the board to approve the request. Just wanted to make that note. So we, my wife and I purchased this house in October of last year. It's a quick thing, I grew up in Idlewood, we built the cottage there in six seven. I lived there for many, many years, we bought a cottage right around the corner from our existing. When we bought this house. There is a room on the east end of the house that is very small in proportion to the rest of the house. What we're, what we would like to do is to simply move that, make that room eleven feet there. So we didn't find out until quite a long time after that bought house that there was. A rear yard setback issue, didn't, never even occurred to us. The way the property is set up at the end of it. We're on the top of the big hill, and the neighbor corrected it easily at the bottom of that hill. When we're in our house on the main floor, the only thing we see of that house is the upper level. So. The hillside is completely wooded, so that neighbor is the one that's kind of, I guess, you would say directly impacted by our request. I don't think that he's really going to see anything different than he currently sees. Today, the neighbors to the north and the south, we're, what we're proposing is no building no closer to what we already are to them. The only ones would have impacted by proximity is the neighbor to the east. So. That is really basically what our request is, simply to make an existing small ring a little better.
Okay. Thank you. I guess, do we have any questions for the applicant? This moment?
Mr. Chair, may I ask?
You bet, please.
Our packet indicates that you have received approval from Eagle for this project, that's still in effect?
For five years.
Okay.
And Mika noted that this is the smallest property in the area, so it's hard to relate it to others with averaging. So it couldn't be.
And the house is actually setback ten feet further in the front, so had the, had the builder done it a little differently, then it would all be incomplete.
How much, I guess I have a question.
How much, I guess I have a question. Do you know how much, um?
The distance to the top of the hill before it slopes?
I would say it's approximately thirty feet.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, it's probably, say between thirty and forty now to the top of the hill.
And it's a fifteen foot or it's eleven feet in that direction to the hill, right? Okay. So you have about twenty feet left of.
Of.
Flatteness. Yeah. Okay.
And you're indicating in your drawing windows on both sides of the addition and it looks like. Pretty much the span of both walls are going to be full windows.
All three.
Oh, sorry, all three, yes.
Yeah, all three.
So the neighbor below you looking up would see that would be their their view to the extent they can see.
Yeah, they wouldn't see it at all from their main floor.
Yeah.
Um, I walked down there the other day and. From where his house is, you can pretty much just see the upper level of our second story. So if they were in their second floor. They may be able to see uh the addition. Uh, but maybe not. It's hard to visualize.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm looking at the topo map right now and it shows the uh. Level of the neighboring property, the bottom of the slope uh to be at about between six hundred and four and six hundred and five um. Feet above the datum and uh the edge of the property in question is at six hundred and thirty seven feet above the datums of, so it's.
Thirty two feet?
Yeah.
Higher?
Definitely, yeah.
Is there any, I guess I got one question for you too. Is there any impact on the existing trees in the backyard, the three that you see in the imagery? Are you removing those to?
When we bought the house, there was one of those three trees, the closest of the ones to the house was leaning over the house. So we removed that before we even considered doing this. It wasn't, it wasn't a tree that could stay.
Gotcha.
The other two are staying. And they're vague.
And and the the existing deck that's on this one drawing, I guess, is that? Removed in the photos?
Right now, yeah, we, we took that deck off.
That's gone.
The original deck, it was old, it was.
Okay.
Useful life. So right now there's nothing there. We will put something there.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm orienting myself here, right? Yep. Looks like it was there.
It was, yeah.
Okay, and I guess you're welcome.
Sorry.
Just on that issue, if they're going to construct, if this were to be approved and then they were to construct a deck. Is that going to be, is that going to require a variance as well?
The planning commission is discussing variances or discussing decks as we speak. They had a first conversation about it at the last meeting. I hope to have an ordinance to them by the next meeting. If not, it'll be the meeting following that. So I can't say how long that's going to take to go through, um, or exactly what that's going to look like at the end of it, but.
If we do put a deck on there, it'll be exactly where the other one was. In other words, it won't be to the east of the new room. It'll be to the north or to the south rather of the new. Or the addition rather.
But if it was nonconforming and it's removed.
Correct. So it it may not, depending on the direction that the ordinance goes, right now decks are required to meet setbacks if they're over thirty inches or if they include a rail. So it's possible that there would have to be some changes made to that plan.
Doesn't, there's no rail. Cause it's ground level.
Okay, ground level at this point is permitted in the ordinance, but again, that's something that's in process right now.
Or if we don't like, we're actually on.
Would you, apologies, would you mind going to the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm Aaron Rock. I work for Brower Building Construction Manager. I think I've been emailing with you back and forth a few times. So we're actually in the process right now. If we do decide to, well, we did remove the deck because it was dilapidated. Uh, we're in the process of possibly just doing a concrete patio, so it'll be at grade ground level with no railing or anything. Cause we don't really, we don't need it basically is what we're getting at, so.
Is this, is it the same issue if it's a concrete, um, pad?
No, and and I can speak to what the ordinance says right now. As I said, it's being actively rewritten and the planning commission is talking about all sorts of issues, so I can't say exactly where it's going to land. Uh, but at this point, no, if it's a, if it's something that's at grade, that's permitted uh within the setback area.
Okay, what would that mean for us now that they're talking about it? I mean, would we be able to do it? Or would we have to wait for their?
You, nope, anything that you submit right now is um and would go through the process right now as approved and then. Uh, if if when that change occurs, they'll say this is the date that this is going into effect. Uh, and then that's the date at which that would start.
Okay. Again, I'm forgetting. I don't have any experience with this. Generally speaking, how long, what kind of a timetable with this issue?
Uh, not less than three months. Would be my estimate. Yes. Unless they are really efficient, which. We can all hope, but.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions for the applicant? All right, Mr. Preece, you're welcome. Anything else? All right, I'm gonna open it up, public hearing, if there's anyone here to speak for, yes, no, I'm gonna close it. Have our board discuss. Put that up. And there's only one set of standards that we're looking at. We don't have to go through.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. What a treat. And it's, yeah, four, four standards and thirty eight seventy that we've done before.
I'll move to approve.
All right, you want to take a shot?
That's, it'll be a shot.
Do it. Thank you.
Standards, uh, thirty, section thirty eight seventy. First standard that strict compliance with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area, yard setbacks, frontage height, bulk or density or other regulation. Would render conformity with those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdens them. Strict compliance with the zoning ordinance is somewhat comparable to other areas in the zoning district. But may be a bit out of place in this neighborhood with its widely variable parcel sizes and existing setbacks. Standard two, that granting the requested variance would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. If a lesser relaxation than the applied for would give substantial relief to the property owner and be more consistence. Consistent with justice to other property owners in the district. The Board of Appeals may grant unless a variance provided the other standards are met. This addition would be, oops, no. There goes my stab. This is the neighborhood with significant variability in both top topography and lot structure geometry. Where nonconforming parcels and setbacks are common. Number three. That the plight of a property owner applicant is due to unique circumstances of the property. The parcel is conforming in size, but the notable grade changes in both the front and rear of the parcel may have influenced. The original placement of the home on the parcel.
And I think we should add a little bit to that to say that this is one of the smaller parcels in the area that. Um, restricts it from being compared or part of the averaging that could be applicable and cannot be.
Thank you. That practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. Although the builder of the house could have placed the house differently on the property, there does not seem to be evidence that recent owners. Created the practical difficulties.
Great. All right, so we've got our motion. Do we have a support? Support. All right, Jim, if we can get a roll call? Yes.
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 Yes. You've got your variance. Thank you. Okay, on to our next topic, the agenda.
That's right.
Appeal determination, I guess, Mika.
Yeah. And no ice cream.
Oh, I should have gotten ice cream.
Yeah.
How you saying?
I, I, I brought this to you because I had someone bring it to me uh to run it past me and I wasn't really comfortable with any of the answers that I was landing in. Um, I was a little bit concerned that if we started proving second floor decks for accessory buildings, I have to say this is the first one that I saw. Um, but if we prove that, that we're kind of opening a loophole, um, when we are not permitting things like lean-tos. Now, a deck is structurally a little bit different than a lean-to. It doesn't have a solid, it doesn't have a solid roof, but. Um, they're similar enough that I, I just wanted to bring it to you and get your uh, your opinion on how you would classify this.
Uh, I've been thinking about it a little bit too and I just. I just think it opens it up for quite a bit of risk for the township a little bit to not include it. I mean, cause it's, you've got a raised platform, you got a deck. On an accessory building, which is supposed to be occupiable, right? But. It opens it up for storage underneath it all the time. I mean, it is quasi-covered. Like you said, you could easily, somebody easily start utilizing that. Space for something.
Mm hmm.
Whether it is the carport you see in the image or just.
You're like short of a landing that's needed to get up to the second story like we saw in recent application that this is. Highly problematic.
Yeah.
From an enforcement standpoint. I can't really envision, I, I don't really see how a deck. Used for leisure is customarily incidental to uh primary structure that it should even be part of an accessory building. Um, where residential uses are not allowed.
We've seen stairs and we just had a item recently where there was a stair added to a door, I, but we haven't seen a.
That, this is a new one. Um, so you, you mentioned the landing. What would your thought be on the landing? So if there were a door to the inside and a walkway along one side, for example. Um.
I think if it's designed for access. That's different because it provides access and if you have to keep the access clear. Then that eliminates or lessens the likelihood that it will be stacked high with. Items um, or used for storage.
And if it's used to like overcome topographical challenges, I could see it being, if it turns into something that's elevated. You, you're still trying to get into something, I don't know.
What was the context in which someone was asking for this?
They like to build an accessory building with this deck on it. Uh, and they're saying that they're not going to be using it for storage underneath, that they're using it to get more sun, better sun, to kind of. Sit around it because of trees that are around or something along those lines. Um, there are again some setback issues, questions with regard to decks that would be, that would be part of that too. Um, the, the tricky thing is, yeah, I mean, they say they're going to use it for one thing and maybe they will. Or maybe they won't, or maybe they will and the person that they sell the house to will use it to store their tractor.
It seems like it changes the characteristic of an accessory building or the nature of an accessory building when you're adding. A deck for recreational purposes, in my.
Kind of like the big game.
Well, I can tell you with all my experience and stuff is doing inspections for many a years. We're seeing a lot more of these accessory buildings where they would build a loft. And turn that into like a bar, a gathering area. And then they build a deck because they want people to go outside to smoke or whatever.
Mm hmm.
And about, I can think of three that I work for municipalities. That allow the decks on there as long as you have a stairway going down. In case of, like you're grilling up there and there's a fire or something, because it is a gathering area. As an additional egress. So they allow it if you have steps going down.
If it were adjoining the principal. You know, structure. And that, I mean, I don't.
If, if it were an attached.
Due to that.
Yeah, if it were an attached garage, there wouldn't, I don't think that there would be the same issue. It would again still need to be, be the setback requirements.
Yeah, because if it's attached, it's not an accessory anymore.
Right.
Right.
I feel like it needs to be part of the bigger conversation about accessory structures.
Yeah, amen.
What, what are limitations are on those structures because. And I understand the logic behind wanting your accessory building to be a gathering place and man cave and watch the game and all of that. Um. But like we saw at the last meeting, our ordinance isn't very clear with regard to. Can this be a completely finished structure with a fireplace and is that, if, if that's why we're allowing that, if you get that fixed. Right, if, if we're eliminating what an accessory structure is to utilize for. Um, that I want to see how a deck is consistent with that. But that's the answer to your question.
The guest house and then.
Including it in the square footage. Um, I think it would be wise to do so, especially where it creates the possibility for storage underneath.
Underneath, yeah, and people will do. I mean, they will put things under there.
And how do you limit the size otherwise?
Yeah.
Of the whole assembly of accessory and deck together.
Yeah, and the deck isn't, isn't typically included, which somebody told him that and I don't remember if it was me or if it was, if it was another member of the staff that said, you know. Well, decks aren't included because they're typically not, but this isn't typically what we're, what we're referring to.
I still have this in the mouth. It's just niggling at me that this whole idea of these accessory buildings will one day be guest houses. You know, I can see it. I mean, not now, but I can just see that happening.
It's something that we do keep an eye on, but it's, it is a question.
This is another.
Yeah. Um, would, would you agree with Lauren's statement, you know, if there's a, that a, that a stairway should. Be something that would be desirable.
Yes, I.
Oh, I think.
Absolutely.
I was shocked when I drive through new developments, uh, how many decks there are with no stairs down and I think that is very dangerous.
My three-year-old thought it was really funny to lock me on the deck at one point.
I mean, it's, it's one.
One of those.
It's one thing for a house to have a deck with no stair, but the. The, the hazard type is not comparable to an accessory building hazard, like storing gasoline in it. Everything else, you gotta have another way out of there, right? That's a fair point. For safety, you gotta have it.
Should be. And you don't necessarily have the same water supply there. You don't have.
Yeah, your amenities are limited.
Fire risk easily.
Mm hmm.
Or foam, I mean, not that there's phones.
Yeah, we're not gonna let in that plumbing there, so how are they gonna have water there?
Water.
Actually, if you have a property where maybe you're, you can't physically have a deck on your primary structure, whether. It's because of topography or setbacks or whatnot, and the only place you can have a duck would be on your accessory building. That would seem like a reasonable consideration, but if you have a huge deck on your home. And I want to add a deck on your accessory structure, then I have a hard time. Hmm, I have a hard time seeing how that deck is now. Customarily incidental and accessory to your principles, while like when you already have that on your principal dwelling.
It, it's nice to have a regulation to say that, though. I mean, right, we get these things of what we're supposed to do. Okay, well, it. Well, then the guy down the street wants to do it, then the next one, and then, you know, it can become a flood.
And that's what we're trying to benchmark here, right? Is giving yourself a line in the sand a little bit to help.
Yeah, and I think it's helpful too that we're discussing decks in the context of planning commission right now, because now somebody thinks from this conversation. Yeah, and I think it's helpful too that we're discussing decks in the context of planning commission right now, because now somebody thinks from this conversation I can, I can bring to that too.
I, I think your picture was a good illustration.
Yeah.
That's an excellent.
To consider the deck. Part of the accessory structure if we're going to allow decks because. That's a very good indicator.
Yeah, I wonder. When I looked at it as, was, was like, is that whole, was that holding a deck and then?
Somebody put a little. Addition on the deck to be closing a little seasonal room.
It was almost like it's under the house.
Sometimes with a permit, sometimes without a permit, you try to check, but.
I think with zoning or when, if you do the. Ordinance different. Another good idea would be. A certain percentage. Of the accessory, of the deck up meets the accessory building, whereas. The deck can't be bigger than the accessory building type of thing.
Yeah.
Like twenty five percent or whatever, right?
Well, because then you get into like a rooftop deck and all sorts of.
Big gazebo up there. Yep.
Yeah, decks seem like they should be simple and I found them to be the most complicated.
Yeah.
Well, especially when you're looking at accessory buildings, you're coupling this with all the accessory buildings that we deal with, that are already in violation of a setback. Now you're talking about adding decks to that. That's. I can see why it's.
Yeah.
Complicated. Yeah, if someone had appealed a determination to the CBA about whether to include. Deck in the square footage, I think that would be a reasonable interpretation.
Okay.
Would it still be a deck? Well, I guess it would be a second floor deck. I was just thinking if they had stared down to a deck. Is it still, still part of the accessory building? I guess.
Like if it were a first floor deck?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would not count a square footage as a first floor deck.
Okay. It's just second floor.
Second floor, because I'm thinking that it's not the square footage of the, um. The top of the structure, it's the square footage underneath the structure.
Yeah. That's how I originally looked at it.
Yeah.
Too.
So you'd basically consider it as part of the footprint, but only if it's raised.
That's what, yeah, that's, that's my thinking.
Because then you can physically get under it to do things.
And we have height restrictions in our.
We don't. Oh, we have height restrictions for the, the height of the accessories.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so that would be applicable.
With, with, we don't know, I guess, but. Would there be a point at to which it gets classified as second level? Does it have to marry up to the? Second level of the accessory building or is it? You know what I mean?
I do know what you mean, uh, because that's something that we've been talking about. I think that that's probably something that we'll try to define. In the rewrite of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, at this point it would be, I would, if, if anything, this is the first time I've seen this, so I don't think I'll get ten of them before, uh, before that's done, but you know, um, it, what, eight foot ceiling height, something like that. In that neighborhood would probably be about. A dividing line I'd be looking at.
Like to Lauren's point, like restricting the size to a point where you can't fit a vehicle under, so getting it less than eight by. You know, something, so you can't physically do it.
Doesn't turn into another garage.
Right, right.
You know?
Yeah, you could.
Still put a grill under it. That's tricky.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your thoughts on that.
To be in motion? I don't know what to do. What we do.
Yeah, I, I. I think you could do it either way. I mean, given that the ordinance is in the process of being revised. I think in this case, that's probably enough, um, if you can make it, if you wanted to make a formal determination convinced.
I don't.
We need to do. Yeah, neither.
Especially because it's already been reviewed.
Be appealed and it really hasn't been.
Yeah, yeah.
Given to an applicant, so it feels a little premature.
Keep it advisory.
Yeah, it was a, just a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did we answer, did we answer your question?
We did.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, now it's public comment time, I guess.
Our next meeting is.
July one, huh? Sheesh, we got two petitions, you say?
I think it's. I think it's two.
Two?
Might be three.
I think you said two or three.
Two sounds better.
I, I like two.
It says two on here. We're holding it to you.
Yeah.
It's in writing, Mika. I see it right here, plain as day. Yeah, we did. Good point. Yeah.
And you don't need one.
All right, so we've motioned to adjourn?
Thank you. So moved.
Support.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks, everybody.